Everybody. I have seven o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Ramona Becker.
Here.
Guy McDonald.
Here.
Betty Martin.
Here.
Peggy O'Donnell.
Here.
Diane Nguyen.
Here.
We have a quorum mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. And with all meetings, we'll open with a moment of silent prayer. Amen. If you now please rise and join us in the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wanna welcome staff and governing body back for our first meeting of 2016. Twenty fifteen went by way too fast, and Councilmember Becker and I talked earlier today. We decided that the whole holiday break went by way too fast, but I don't know if there's anything we can do about that. But I just wanna welcome everybody back. The first thing before council this evening are the minutes of two different meetings. December fifteenth, the city council meeting, and then the December seventeenth, our city council is when we had that special meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And passes. Move right along is the item A, appropriations ordinance sixteen dash oh one. The amount of $601,567 and three cents. Again, it's a little high for this meeting. We paid for two brand-new warning lights along Woodlawn near Bel Air Park. We also put in a pet water fountain at the Bel Air Park. This was partially funded from the money that we got from the hot dogs pool party. So then we also did some new lighting at the rec center that's gonna pay for themselves in three years due to energy savings. Which anytime we can save energy and money at the same time, I like that. And then, of course, we have the big end is the $300,000 in debt service payment to the rural water district. So that is before council tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve appropriations ordinance sixteen dash oh one.
Second.
Second, first and second, are there questions or comments? Leading appropriations ordinance sixteen dash oh one. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Citizens' concerns. Have any there? For the mayor's report, have nothing formal to report, other than we'll have our State of the City address a week from tonight prior to our workshop. And again, just wanna remind people, the workshop, we're inviting citizens to come in and share with us their ideas of what 2016 should look like and what is needed from their viewpoint. So we'd encourage all citizens to come to that. And with that, that's the end of my report. Move on to individual members' reports. We'll start down with Councilmember Martine.
The Monday before Christmas, I attended the senior club, rented a party bus, and we went clear over on the west side and down St. Paul Street and came back and toured some of the Bel Air Christmas lights. And they were, it was just fantastic. I think there was about twenty-one of us that went on that bus. And then this morning, I attended breakfast with them at IHOP, and there was about seventeen people that came at eight-thirty. It's hard for me to get out of bed, but I did it. And that was also a good time, and I hope everybody had a wonderful Christmas. That's it.
Councilmember Nguyen.
Short report. I attended the volunteer breakfast that we had prior to the Christmas holidays. And that was, I wish there'd been more volunteers there, but it was kind of nice in a way because I got to visit with several volunteers that I didn't know and a couple of the staff members, and felt like that was something that was very positive. Tomorrow, I will be attending the first Chamber of Commerce, the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce meeting of 2016. We have a new president that will be installed. And the theme of this year is to make it bigger and better and more valuable kind of thing. And so to any of those who are listening, you don't have to have a business in Bel Air. My business is at Twenty-First and Amaden, but I live here, so I belong to the Chamber of Commerce here. So that would conclude my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember O'Donnell.
Well, I just wanna wish everyone a Happy New Year. It's hard to believe that we had to have kids back at school today, yes.
They were all excited, weren't they?
Oh, they were excited as we were, yeah. And I just am sorry I didn't get to go to the breakfast. I ended up not feeling well before the holidays, but I heard it was a nice breakfast, not a huge turnout. And I just wanted to give a shout-out. I was really privileged to get to go to the, I think, one of the most exciting games I've ever been to in my life last night with KU and OU, the triple overtime. And I thought it was really neat on all the news channels over the last twenty-four hours. They have said the two main players have their ties to Bel Air and Wichita. I thought that was really cool with Buddy being from Sunrise and Perry Ellis at Heights. So it got us some really recognition locally, 'cause both of those schools are like a mile apart. So that was kind of really.
And both of them lived in Bel Air one time.
That's right, yeah, that's why I was asking. I thought the Ellis's used to, that was kind of cool pre-war for our city, so.
It was really cool.
And that's my only report, thanks.
Councilmember McDonald.
Just wanna wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I have no report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Becker.
I just will note that I also went to the volunteer breakfast, which was very nice, really enjoyed that. And I think all the volunteers that attended did also. Also went to the last Community Development Advisory Council meeting. I think you were there too, weren't you? Or were you not? Okay.
No.
All right, anyway, attended that last meeting of the year, and that was a nice time with those present just to kind of wrap up the year, look back on what we did, and make plans for the next year coming up. Great group of people. I also would just like to encourage citizens, as you mentioned, Mayor, to really get involved with the city and contact us if they have concerns about anything. I think people are kind of bashful sometimes about contacting council members, but we're very open to new ideas and would like to hear from our citizens. And like tonight, we're gonna vote on a lot of ordinances for the city. Many of them came down from the state. And I think, you know, things that affect our lives, people need to be involved in, find out about, and give us their thoughts on it. And so I'd just like to encourage, I'm always glad to hear from Bel Air citizens, and I think all, everybody sitting up here probably feels the same way. And I wanna wish everybody a very Happy New Year for 2016.
Wonderful, thank you so much. With that, we'll move to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple items. I wanted to let our citizens know that if they have a Christmas tree that needs recycling, they can drop that off here. It's in Central Park Pool. And we just asked that they remove the decorations, tinsel, ornaments, lights, those types of things. But there's a place in the parking lot there at the pool, and then we'll end that February first. So if citizens still have their tree, wanna get rid of it, they can do it. There's other locations throughout the county that the county does, so you may have seen that on social media. You could take it there, because that's sponsored by the county, or you can bring it here, and we'll take care of it. So either one. And then I wanted to mention, since we're into the new year, our employee of the quarter for last quarter, the last quarter in 2015, is Ann Stevens, our new public work structure city engineer. We heard some positive things from citizens and staff about the things that she's been doing here. And so we'll give her a certificate and half a day off for doing so well with us. So that's all I have, Mayor.
And speaking of Ann, I know she got a lot of, did a lot of work, as we completed the work along Edgemore, certainly. And I did receive a number of, all right, two, but that's a number. The two people I talked to about that we rode around Bel Air, looked at Bel Air lights, and go down Edgemore, both people were with me at different times, and this is nice. I said, well, this is what we do here, so.
It is nice.
Okay. Move right along into ordinances, resolutions, and final actions. First thing under there for council is the consideration of approving an agreement between our city and the Wichita YMCA specifically for the summer day camp program. This actually, you know, if you go back to 1996, which is, holy cow, you know, that's.
Twenty years.
Yeah, twenty years now. Bel Air and Wichita Y have partnered for a summer day camp at our rec center. I wanna point out that a lot of many, a lot of Bel Air working parents utilize that program during the summer. What's really nice about this is that the YMCA covers the staff, the supplies, all of the cost. And basically what Bel Air provides is the facility. I mean, 2012, four years ago, we made some adjustments to that agreement that increased compensation, that better covered the city expenses. The Y certainly would like to continue this relationship. The rec center, their staff feels this is a positive program to offer, and to say, really, it does not interfere with any of our rec programs at that time. So with that, I'd certainly recommend that council approve this agreement. And wanna point out, it brings in roughly about $5,500 in revenue.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with the Wichita YMCA Summer Day Camp Program and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I do have a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
On the agreement, I would like to see the, under fees on the agreement with YMCA, it says the base fee for use of the facility will be $100 a day for up to thirty campers. I don't think that's accurate.
Not sure. For $100 a day.
I think it's $100 a week. After that, it says weekly base fee, so it's unclear.
So if we got weekly and monthly, is that something we can double-check?
Yeah, we received this from the Y, so.
So the Y sends it over?
Yeah, so we'll get that taken care of.
Yeah, please do. Thank you.
We'd be happy to get $100 a day.
I don't think any parents are gonna pay.
There goes our plan.
But they probably don't wanna pay that.
Right.
Yes.
That's funny, Lisa, okay. All right, thank you so much, Council President McDonald on that. Okay, next is a resolution. This is concerning service and license and permit fees within our city limits. Each year, we evaluate the staff, really, the work looks at all of our fees that we charge to make sure that they line up with the actual cost, and also that we are in line with other programs. And we always seem to be one of the more affordable ones, which I like. The proposed 2016 fee schedule contains only a few increases that cover actual expenses. The rec center is proposing raising program fees by ten percent. And I wanna point out, they have not been increased since 2011. I know we discussed this at length at our December seventeenth workshop, and so it's on the agenda for consideration tonight, to do that, if we want to approve this, if we're comfortable with the proposal, or if we wanna have, if anybody has some changes they'd like to make before moving forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I was surprised to see that the rates for the Bel Air citizens were raised, because I thought when we talked about this at the workshop, most of us agreed that we would like to keep the rates as they are for Bel Air residents. I think it's fine to raise all of the others, but I'd really, I thought we agreed to keep the, when we had that discussion, most of us on the council wanted to keep our Bel Air resident rates the same, not raise them.
Right, yeah, that was certainly discussed, and absolutely an option, absolutely.
So I mean, that's why there's.
I still feel the same way, that we should keep our residence rates the same.
And I think that was pretty much the kind of main, but.
Well, no, I, well, no, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Well, we couldn't do anything at a workshop, you can't vote, and so that's why it has to be adjusted now, because, you know, that's what was presented. But I'm, I'm for the way we have listed it here. I think it's not that much, and it's what staff, what they've recommended. So I'm comfortable with the way it's presented.
Mr. Mayor. I think I was the one that probably talked the most on this at the workshop about not raising the residents, but we could raise the non-resident. And so I'm sorry, Peggy, I have to disagree. I don't think the residents should be raised, due to the fact they're already paying taxes. Plus, on social security and, and stuff like that, nobody got a raise this year. They say the cost of inflation has not gone up, and so I'm, I'm still gonna stand by it that the residents should not be raised. Thank you.
Certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Becker.
I'll make a motion to approve a resolution concerning service, license, and permit fees within corporate limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, with the caveat that we retain the same rates for our residents, and we can raise all the others as suggested by staff.
Second.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
Perfect, I got that, so. Have the motion to amend the current proposal where residents' fees remain the same, non-residents' fees go along with suggestion. Looking down here, wanna, we have a first and second.
For clarification point, was it any fee associated with the resident? Or was it only recreation? Because the motion was any fee associated with the resident.
The fees that were listed in the document that we received, some were for residents and some were for non-residents.
Under recreation.
For the rec center.
Just the rec.
Just the rec.
Just the rec center. I'd agree with that.
So do we need to have that?
Thank you for that clarification.
No, as long as everybody understands what they're voting on, it's fine.
It's just the rec center, but all the other fees are gonna be as listed.
Right.
The rec center fees.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant, and I'm glad you caught that.
No problem. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is consideration of the 2016 Bel Air salary schedule. We did put in the budget for a two percent cost of living raise for city employees. Staff presented that schedule that contains the two percent COLA. It's now up to the governing body to determine how much, if any. We had a lot of discussion on that, cost of living raise that would be give, that they would give to the employees. My recommendation, I think I stated that too at the workshop, was that I would recommend that we approve the two percent for two reasons. One, 'cause it is in the budget, and secondly, in the last five years, they've only received, employees have only received one COLA adjustment, that was just one percent. So, but that is, again, like with the fees, that is, everything is up for discussion for council to decide tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember McDonald.
I, I'm very happy with staff. Every time I greet a member of staff, I'm treated with courtesy and respect, and, you know, sometimes there's jokes. But since the seniors have not received a cost of living adjustment from the federal government, and having been in business for a period of time, I never gave a cost of living adjustment to my employees. So I'm against this, this particular, this particular agenda item. I'll stop right there.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I appreciate all the talk we had about this on the seventeenth of December. I don't know if citizens had a chance to look at it. I've been around a long time, and it was a long time that our citizens can remember that our staff didn't get a raise. And we put this in the budget, knowing we would have to see where we are, and now we are in January of 2016. We do have the money. I do appreciate what Councilmember McDonald said about, I think when he's saying seniors, are you talking about social security?
Yes.
Yeah. However, I do think social security was raised at points when our staff wasn't. So I kind of hate to use that as our measuring stick. I think we need to do something, even if it's a one percent, or if we want to do it. They gave us different things here in our packet to talk about, but a lot of them went for a while without anything. And we have it, and I think we should just honor them in some way with even a one percent, if not a two percent. So. Before I make a motion, did you want to talk, sorry?
So we've heard a discussion of a zero and a one percent, is there other discussion?
Well, I'll just weigh in. In, being in private business, that is never how I have based raises. Cost of living adjustments just is not how it's gone about. I realize that sometimes in government and civil workers, you have set rates and various things like that, so it's a little different, but that's kind of where I, I stand. I'm really not in favor of it, not because of the staff or anything. I think they're, you know, the ones that I know are great. So I'm kind of not in favor particularly of the two percent, so.
Mr. Mayor. Okay. The December seventeenth or fifteenth, whatever it was.
Seventeenth.
We received two breakdowns. This last packet, we got another breakdown, and Michelle explained it in the deal, what she was, but I still don't understand it. Because I don't see where, the first two we got, how much they were making, then the next two we got is lowered. And they're still at the same step level or something. So I, I really can't go for this if I don't know what I'm voting on. But what I would like to make a motion of, is everybody is through discussing this?
I just have one question.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure.
May I interrupt?
You go ahead.
And it's not completely following what you were saying, but on this memo we got from the financial director, or finance director, it, in this one bullet item, it says they moved several positions up one step level, is that correct? And that means they're gonna make a little bit more money? Or should it mean that? It doesn't really seem that way, but I.
Okay, that's excellent question. That's, employees, and do you wanna point that out, that employees, regardless of the COLA decision, whether it's a zero, one, or two percent, or something in between there, are still eligible. Those that have not stepped out, is that, they're maxed out, are still eligible for merit increases of what we're, at what we agreed upon earlier. And of course, that's all due upon successful evaluations and all of that. Those will be determined with their supervisors, so.
But I just wondered about the ones that are listed in this memo. That has been done, correct?
I believe so. I'm gonna ask city manager to put him on the spot here.
That's the, the proposed salary schedule to allow that to happen, where if someone is topped out, we've given them some additional responsibilities that would allow them to move up another pay scale. And so that's why it's on here for whatever percent, so that we could still make those changes. And it may be a zero percent COLA increase, or whatever you would, would decide. But yeah, that's what those are for, and like I said, then, we also combined some job descriptions, did away with some that we didn't even have, things like that.
I understand that part, but I don't see how this would be contingent on the COLA increase, step increases.
The changes in the, yeah, it's not.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, that's.
And I have no problem with that, because I think that needs to be done when you have an organization. Sometimes you need to make adjustments like that, I have.
You gotta prepare for the absolute in case, yeah.
I have no problem with that part. But I was curious about it, because when I was looking at the schedule, just as Councilmember Martine noted, some of these looked like they didn't increase with the changes.
The, the two that were included in there, the two spreadsheets, if that's what you're talking about, one included a two percent COLA, and then the other one included zero COLA, so.
I understand that, but I, I compared the ones we got last at the workshop, and then there was a different set than the materials for this meeting.
Yes, and after the workshop, we talked a little bit more about some of the positions, and whether someone, based on what their duties were, whether they should move up a step or down a step, or whatever. So we made a couple adjustments there. So that's why if you saw a certain title, and I think we only did it a couple times, one title on the previous one was maybe higher in a different step than the one that you have before, 'cause we decided, well, I don't know, based on what we're gonna have that employee do, I don't know that we need to actually move it up to another.
And how are the steps adjusted according to years of service?
Basically, the steps, an employee can receive a step increase every year, if council budgets for that and approves that, then, so then they would move up a step. And so someone could be here ten years and maybe only be on step eight, because there wasn't a budgeted increase for that. Or you run into the situation where someone's here fourteen years, and they're at step thirteen, because they've topped out. And so at that point, you know, you have to determine, does their job duties allow them to move up? Or are you gonna give them some more, you know, responsibilities, or maybe some more training, that they might be able to move up another one? And in the end, you, you have to look at, too, the market. I mean, you know, you've got a position, and you have what the duties are. Even though they get to the top, is, you know, does that really mean that because they've been here more years, they actually should move up another grade, basically?
Well, I was curious about that, because when I worked for the state, we had more of a coaxial chart, where you have education on this line and years on this line, and then you had to.
Yep.
Correlate that way.
I've seen those.
And I just didn't see anything like that in there, so.
Yep, we don't have that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor. I thought that if you gave a two percent COLA, everyone got it, no matter what step they were on.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Mr. Mayor had a question. Just clarification, Mr. Lasher, when you were answering Dr. Becker's question and you said that you guys, because these aren't the same as we were comparing them.
Right.
But you didn't, if you changed someone's job title, but nobody lost income on what they were making if you changed it around, did you? You would maybe.
No.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
So, someone may have been like at a step seven and at a certain grade.
At one thing.
E5 or whatever. And, and then we looked at, well, should we move them up to an E6? And then, of course, that pay, they would drop down to a step three because you want to make sure that they're, you know, just because you move them up doesn't mean they automatically get a pay increase, then they have to move along that grade as well.
Okay. I just want to make sure no one.
No, uh-uh. So, nothing.
Got a decrease. Because it was kind of hard in the packet, like they said, to figure out, I mean, this was easy to look at the COLA included, but when you compared it, it was.
Yeah.
Kind of hard.
And like I said, that's what, after we, after the workshop, we went back, Michelle and I went back and looked at, okay, so there was a couple of positions that we said, you know, based on what we're going to be doing with staffing, is there, are we going to add that many things that they should move up one or not? And based, again, not based on the employee whatsoever, it's based on the job and their duties.
Okay.
You know, at this point, I think it can be here and then if we want to add some duties later or add some education requirements, then maybe we look at moving that up to another grade, you know, the next one up.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I make a motion to deny 2016 City of Bel Air salary schedule containing a blank percentage cost of living adjustment.
Second?
First and second for a 0 percent COLA. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
What happened?
Did you mean a zero, that you wanted to deny a z?
No, no, I, it's a blank percentage on my, on the form here.
Had you guys wanted to give a half percentage or a one percentage, you could have put that in there.
Betty had a question.
Yes.
Can I still ask being it's already been called for?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to see done is to have this table till we get a better clarification. I'm, Mr. Lasher explained it very well, but the, according to the last meeting's pages we got and this meeting's pages, they still, you lost money according to these sheets. And I don't want anybody to be deducted of their pay for what they're getting right now because they are a good staff, but I would think that maybe, being it's already in the budget, if Mr. McDonald would agree to table this.
Well.
So that we could get a better clarification or you'd rather leave your motion the same?
May I respond? Mr. Mayor?
Okay. I just want to say, absolutely, I want to bring in because we called for the vote and voted and you seconded.
Yes.
So.
I think that there was already a vote on Mr. McDonald's motion.
Right.
So, at this point, if Councilmember Martine wants to request that this matter be brought back, be brought back to a date certain, or for example.
He has to amend the motion, doesn't he?
He's, it's already been voted on.
No.
No, it hasn't.
Yes, it has.
There was a call for the vote, but Guy voted yes, he was the only one, Peggy was the only no, because.
That's the only two that voted? I didn't vote. I didn't either.
Right, yeah, those were the only votes, it was one.
Because I wanted to ask a question.
Oh, I thought it was just me.
Okay, so.
You didn't vote, did you, Ms. Martine?
No, I did not.
So, we have a motion to give a zero, to get, not to give a COLA. That doesn't affect the, right, just that there's no COLA given this year, even though it was budgeted, so that's why we're voting. And just to clarify, because Councilmember O'Donnell asked, no one went down or anything?
Yeah, so basically, the way I understood it is to not, to deny the salary schedule at 0 percent, so in other words, our salary schedule that we have right now will stay the same. So, Ms. Martine was concerned about, you know, something changes and Ms. O'Donnell too. Nothing will change because we'll use the same salary schedule we have now.
In my opinion, these are two different matters. The cost of living adjustment is one matter and the salary schedule is another matter. And I made a motion for the cost of living adjustment, had nothing to do with the salary schedule.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
I misunderstood you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if, if you call for the vote again and if, for instance, Ms. Martine wants to have this brought up at the next meeting, then if that dies, then we could make another motion to table it. Is that correct? Since it's not a real vote if only two of us out of the five voted, right? I will ask our attorney.
Yeah, I, I think there's so much misunderstanding that there's nothing wrong with stepping back to the point where Mr. McDonald had made a motion and that there was a second and moving forward from that point.
Okay. And that's why I wanted to say that we're voting on.
Then we can deny, I mean.
On giving a 0 percent COLA, it has nothing to do with the salary and that's, trying to say, sorry if I didn't clarify that.
No, I knew.
Clear before, but yeah, so that is just for that. That was Council President McDonald's motion and Councilmember Martine's second that there not be a COLA this year and that's what we're voting on.
And I'm still opposed to that, so I won't change my vote.
I'm going to call for the vote.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so four to one.
I did not vote.
Well, so now we can't table it if you wanted to.
No, no, we're still waiting for one vote.
And, and we're going to table it because there's already.
No, it's too.
I mean, we're going to, this motion passes.
Correct.
Because there's three votes in favor.
If you fail to vote, your vote automatically goes with the majority. Is that what you intend?
I'm going to, I'm going to abstain on this because I think it's too nebulous.
Okay. On a motion, and just for parliamentary reason, on a motion vote, an abstention counts to the majority, so whatever the majority was, an abstention is part of that.
We have a three to one vote with one abstention, which means a four to one vote, so there's no COLA.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just clarification from our attorney. When Ms. Martine asked to revisit this, now we can't do that because it was voted on, correct?
The motion, and I'm going to say no. It's one of those odd, the Roberts rules do not perfectly overlap with state statutes situations. The motion was about approving the 2016 Bel Air salary schedule containing a 0 percent COLA, or that's what the staff put on there.
Right, so they are tied together.
So, they were put there together, but there was only a vote on half the issue. So, the half having to do with the 0 percent, the half having to do with the COLA increase has been voted down, but half the issue remains on the table. And if you'd like to go ahead and table that back to a date certain to discuss it further, I, there's nothing illegal or wrongful about that.
Okay, I'm going to do that. I'm going to make a motion that we bring this back up in two weeks at our 19th of January meeting, that we can get the clarification between this new salary schedule and the COLA. Because I think that was where the confusion was when we got the new salary steps and maybe you can send us information about what maybe those two particular people, so we can be assured. I mean, I, I believe you that you said.
Sure.
That nobody got, but for us looking, it was a little confusing.
Right, you bet. Sure.
Big.
That was my motion.
First, we have a second.
So, you're essentially wanting to table the salary schedule part?
I want to discuss this again because it was broken, it wasn't broken down into salary and COLA, it was together.
There's a motion to discuss the salary schedule at the, at our next regular schedule meeting on the 19th.
I want to do all of this again, so we have more clarification.
The motion was for salary schedule and the COLA schedule.
This motion, I want to revisit that in two weeks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need a clarification. I thought we just voted that there was going to be, you know, no COLA this year.
Correct.
And now, we have a motion to revisit this entire action, including a COLA, and we just voted it down. I, I can't see the, I can vote to reconsider the salary schedule at the next meeting, but I don't think we should revisit the COLA, in my opinion, since we had a four to one vote just a few moments ago.
When we discussed this at a workshop, there was no discussion on the salary and I think that's what's confusing me is because it does say City of Bel Air salary schedule containing blank percent COLA. But to me, that's not discussing the salary thing that, that's confusing, that we got two papers in this packet and two other papers in the last packet and the two we got tonight or got for tonight, they're lower. So, what I thought, how can they take money away from them people?
Because they took the COLA out, just so you can see that, because the COLA had already been budgeted in.
No. The, it had not been budgeted in. One page was complete with the 2016, the other one was with the 2 percent. But that's not what I'm talking about. I was talking about the, the step, these papers that we got, they're 2016 pay scale and the 2016, the old one was the 2015 reconstructed pay scale with a 1 percent COLA. So, last year, they got a 1 percent COLA in 2015 and they're asking for a 2 percent in 2016. But according to their step rates, they're, according to the new ones that we got for tonight's packet, they're lower. How can that be?
I'm thinking that at the workshop, that's, that pay schedule included a 2 percent.
That's correct.
But, so, the one tonight, are you saying the 2 percent tonight is different than the 2 percent that was, okay.
Yes.
Then we need to figure that, we need to figure that out.
It's different.
If there's a difference.
It's different.
Okay, so I want to go back. We had a motion, I did not hear a second, so that motion has.
Died.
Died.
Yep.
That, stay pass that we are not giving a COLA this year. Okay. Let's move on to.
We do need to revisit the salary schedule, don't we?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we table the 2016 City of Bel Air salary schedule until our next meeting.
Second.
There's a first and second on that.
Because I want to understand.
Would you repeat that motion, please?
I move that we table the 2016 City of Bel Air salary schedule until our next meeting.
And you seconded it?
I seconded.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I guess I'm confused why we need to do that if there's not going to be an increase because it is what it is.
Right.
I mean.
Yeah, I, we just need to make sure that, that what was in the packet tonight doesn't have any reductions in stepping, steps for employees. So, we want to make sure that what everybody's making now will remain the same, even though we're not giving a 2 percent increase.
And from the memo that came with it, it appeared to me there were other changes other than just the COLA.
Yes, and we can explain those too, in particular, rather than just, because it was pretty general here. We can tell you exactly which position changed up or down and stuff.
So, there's a first and second to discuss this at our next meeting, but probably won't take any action on it, but just make sure that we all have the same, because we have no action to take, is there?
Can we just do that then at the workshop if we can't do action on it?
Well, the, if you would have, the changes that are in there outside of any COLA included, like a position maybe moving up one, one grade or down a grade. So, by, by approving it, then you would adopt, you know, a certain position to move up or down.
Then we'd have a 216 salary schedule rather than a 215.
Yep, yep.
So, do you have a motion and a second on the floor? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Four to one. We'll have that, okay. Move next to consideration of adopting the 2016 League of Kansas Municipalities Statement of Municipal Policy. The legislature begins their, their session next week, I believe, and I know representatives often consider legislation that really impacts the city and I think we saw quite a bit of that last year. The LKM works with cities to create a platform that details issues that cities, in their opinion, should, you know, are for or against. We discussed adopting this platform as our city's platform at our last workshop. An adopted platform allows myself, the city manager, and council members to contact our local legislatures should something be considered in opposition or support of our platform and I would certainly recommend that this be something that the council approve this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to move to adopt the 2016 League of Kansas Municipalities Statement of Municipal Policy as the City of Bel Air's legislative platform for 2016.
Second?
First and second, any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign and it passes, okay. Next is a charter ordinance exempting the, the city from all provisions of KSA 14-103, 14-204, 14-308, and L-2015 in Charter 88, Section 71. Basically, kind of in a nutshell, what this is all about is, again, the legislative session last year produced a bill that was passed that moved our local elections to November. In addition, it required vacancies to be filled within 60 days or special, or demanded that a special election be held. Charter ordinance coincides with the legislation of moving the elections to November with the governing body members taking their seats in January. Charter ordinance states that vacancies shall be filled within 60 days or a different time period as determined by the council and does, and does not require a special election, so we can charter out of that. The charter also continues no boards, which I think we discussed at our workshop and seemed kind of unanimous that we didn't really want that. So, basically, the question is if council is comfortable with the 60 days to fill a vacancy or like to see it extended to, you know, say something like 90 days, would certainly recommend the council approve the charter ordinance to keep us in line with the state statutes, but also eliminate that need for a special election.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. Is it not possible for us to charter out of the November election and retain our?
No, the, the, just like the Kansas Legislature passed law 2015, Chapter 88, Section 7, which is codified at 24, 25-21801. That law is uniform in application, all cities are bound. I'm sure you've all looked in the newspaper and seen Park City and Valley Centers Charter. Basically, everything in KSA 25 is, is uniform. That's the, the election law. The portion that we are able to charter out from is the part that's going to go into Chapter 12 of the Kansas statutes and most of Chapter 12 of the Kansas statutes is non-uniform as this new law, as, as the new provisions are. So, we, the entire state's basically bound to the, the November elections.
Mr. Mayor? Can I ask the attorney a question?
Yeah.
On Section 3, on the council positions and vacancies, I thought you, somebody stated that we could charter out of, that when they, the next time, like for instance, Ms. Nguyen is taking a vacant seat, that we could charter out of that vacant seat and she would fill the term for the person that had that seat before her?
Yeah, that's part of, that has historically. Yeah, that's part of, that has historically been the rule of the city. When I redid this charter, I took the existing rules of the city and just overlaid the new mandatory law, and, and then the, one portion was non-uniform, which had to do with the elections. I made a statement as to that. But the vast majority of this charter is the existing charter ordinance. So until an action is taken by this council, the way this city is set up is that if someone is appointed to a position, or is appointed to a position, they stay in that position only until the next election. At the next election, that position comes open. And that's kind of, as you remember, when you were elected, we had four open positions and you came in initially for the two years, and it was because of that.
But the council voted on that because Mr. Terrebone left, it was either September or October, and they had till April to fill the seat. So the council, before, well, Peggy was still here, and the mayor, voted to leave that seat vacant until the next election. And I thought that was just a one-time thing.
The charter ordinance, the existing charter ordinance of this city requires that a person once appointed stays in that position only until the next election.
Okay. And I believe we discussed it at the workshop, that, and I don't remember how many agreed that we would take that out and it would go in for, until the next, until her seat expires. Sorry, I have to use you as a...
To actually fill the term.
Yeah, to fill the term.
Mr. Mayor? I know we discussed it, and the rationale, I think, at least in my thinking, and I know it goes at a federal and state level, is anytime you have a vacancy like that, that's very standard, that that person just goes until the next election. If it would be a senate seat, same thing, they don't get to serve five years if they take over one year into it. I mean, it's just until the next general election. And I think that it's a fair thing to do, and that way, the person that was appointed, because, I mean, there was been several, Dave, and then Mo, and then Diane and Ken. Those are just since I've been, but then they serve, but then they, they run with the rest of the elected officials, and that way, it's a true statement of what the citizens want. So I'm actually in favor of leaving it, that they just serve till the next election. I think it worked out okay with you, serving just the two years, then you won, and then you won again.
But that was on the, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
No, no, that's okay.
That was only because the council had voted to leave that seat vacant, and it was on the ballot as a vacant seat.
Well, Ken had to run immediately too at the next election.
But Ken was also appointed by Mr. Harold Smith, and he served out the full term. And when David Sly left, that person served out the full term.
No, they...
Yes, they did.
Well, they, they just went till the next election. It just happened that when they came in, they might have missed that election, like Mr. Lee missed the election.
Right.
And that's why he got to serve a little bit longer.
Mr. Mayor, didn't you get appointed to take a vacant seat before you ran for mayor? You, but you ran?
I ran, and I was elected.
Okay.
You ran with me?
With you.
My second time.
Yeah, and...
So you're going to leave one person up here, and when election comes up?
That's exactly what happened the last time. There were four of us that, if you remember...
Well, I remember, but it's a, it's a tough feeling.
I know it is, and it's an unfortunate situation that hopefully we don't find ourselves in. But the way understood of it was that Councilmember Nguyen was appointed, you know, will serve for the next two years until the election, and then that person will run for a two-year term. Again, since we have the election, you know, we're not going to hold, which is why I'm in favor of passing this charter ordinance, so that we can charter out, so that we don't have to have the special elections, so that we're not bound by that 60 days to make that immediate thing. But I like the idea of it being, you know, if we're going to have an election coming up, that the person be...
So I can run for mayor?
Sure.
(laughing).
Run anytime.
Yeah, right. I don't want your headache.
I would like to, yeah, the mayor's elected to a two-year term, council members are elected to a four-year term, so there is some continuity with that. Certainly, you know, the charter ordinance, as our attorney explained, you know, what the Kansas State Constitution says with the uniform things, you know, the, the uniform statutes cannot be changed, which is that November election. We did talk about that, I don't think we really like it, but it's, we can't really do anything about it.
Well, I knew that it was on the November election, but I didn't know that they could tell you that you couldn't change and have Ms. Nguyen take a vacant seat until that term was up. That's the only thing I want changed. Now, can we do that or not, Allison?
You can, you can. The only thing that I've presented to you is the existing charter language. If there is something within the existing charter language you, as a unified body, would like to change, that's totally your call.
Let me ask for clarification, and we certainly don't have a motion for anything on the floor right now, but let me use this as an example, just kind of gauging by where I think this conversation might be going. If council votes to do away with that, where it's to fill the complete term, Councilmember Nguyen was appointed under the old charter, so would still have to, is still only for a two-year term, that doesn't change this next election.
Well, I think it would.
No.
This president's would take over the other charter, because it's going to, it'll...
She would have to resign and have to reappoint her.
Right.
Yeah.
Because she already got appointed until the next election.
But if you change this...
But you can't change what you voted on.
You can't retroactive it, active, yeah.
In November.
Okay, this is going to take the place of several charter ordinances. So you're telling me that if we change another charter ordinance, that whatever happened before is not going to change?
Because it was under that ordinance at that time. When Councilmember Nguyen was appointed, it was under the charter ordinance, which we have now, which says any person appointed served until the next election.
Correct.
If you change that now, that doesn't affect anybody who's up on the bench now.
Right.
What would happen if someone else were to resign, if that moves forward, if somebody else were to resign and be appointed and that's passed, then that person would have the remaining term. Yeah.
Does our attorney agree with that?
I have never had to deal with that situation before, so I would, I would not be comfortable just answering that one off the cuff.
Well, how long do we have before we have to send this off?
Yeah, we don't, we could table this tonight, couldn't we not? I mean, it's, we don't have elections until November, or for two years, actually.
November of '17.
Yeah.
So we could table it or ask for a recess till she can go. Would you have time to research it?
No, I would, I would need some time. I'd need some time, I don't know.
You have two, two weeks to the next meeting, could you get it by then?
Is two weeks enough, or do we want to?
A month?
Because again, we don't need to take immediate...
Mr. Mayor, if everybody's through with their discussion, I would make...
I think Councilmember McDonald had a question, I'm sorry.
I had no question. I was going to make a motion, but it looks like Councilwoman Martine wants to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Let's see, we're on this one. I make a motion to table the charter ordinance exempting the City of Bel Air, Kansas from all provisions of KSA 14-103, 14-204, 14-308, and L-2015, CH, period, 88, Section 71, codified at 12-104A, providing substitution and additional provisions for the same and repealing the charter ordinance. Three, Chapters, Ordinance 7, and Chapter Ordinance 16, and authorize the mayor to sign until two weeks.
Second.
We have first and second. Questions or comments? The motion is to table, since it's for a charter ordinance, still have to do the roll call. Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Martine?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Me, aye.
Me, aye.
I like that.
Me, aye. Me, aye. Me, aye. Thank you.
Okay. May belong to F. That is consideration of approving a revised council workshop policy. We talked about this briefly, and certainly I really like this idea, that basically we have a specific date and time that is established for council workshops. It does not guarantee we'll have a council workshop that month, but if a workshop were to happen that month, that would need to be the second Tuesday of the month after the first Tuesday of the month, at 6:30. I would certainly recommend approving this policy.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember O'Donnell?
I've got some comments to make about that. I've read the, the council workshop policy. I've read the Bel Air Council Meeting Rules of Order, and I've read the council meeting policy, and in reading them, I'm in favor of them, but in reading them, there are multiple discrepancies in grammar and spelling and statements that are unclear. So I would like to just see these rewritten, basically, because this is a city council, and we have a record, and it should be readable by the public, if, you know, and it should be understandable by anyone. We have a computer proofreader that accepts a lot of sentences that don't make sense, basically, because the words are proper, the words are in order. We need a human being to proofread or edit these things. So that's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
I would agree with Mr. McDonald. I found several errors, and I'm not a very good speller. But I would also like to ask the question if, does the council still have permission, or they can still ask you or tie to put items on the agenda?
For, on the workshop, or?
On the workshop.
Yeah.
Because that's not even listed here. And I think in the past it was, but I'm not real sure on that, because I couldn't find the other...
The council workshop is a lot less formal than a, than a council meeting, you know.
Well, I still think that under the agenda, that should be added under one of the bullets, that the council can ask for items to be put, be put on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor? Because of what I said about the grammar and spellings and unclearness of some of the statements, I'm going to make a motion that we table Action Item F, Action Item G, and Axum, Action Item H, till the, till these documents can be rewritten in a form that is understandable by all.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Is this something that we could discuss at our workshop Tuesday, Mr. McDonald, do you think?
No, I, what I think is that staff should rewrite this, these, you know, the workshop policy, the, whatever the number of items that I just listed for. Because it'll take us, you know, a couple of hours probably, just to talk about, you know, what wording do we want here, what's the meaning of this?
I just wonder.
You know, I think it should be given time and let staff work on it.
Mr. Mayor? Were you finished?
I'm finished.
May I suggest that each of us who has found errors send those to staff, so they'll know exactly what we're talking about?
I was going to ask the very thing.
Yep.
Ready of those? Okay, so there is a motion we table, without the immediate, but just they get, the grammar is, so the...
And clarification.
I minored in English, why can't I think of the word? The, that the tenses, tense and everything.
The verbiage.
Verbiage, everything's correct. So to table FG and H, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next is an ordinance for the recodification of the ordinances. And throughout the year, I mean, all last year, we often adopted changes to our city codes, and really like, I think we did a really good job in 2015 of getting some outdated ones current. In 2015, we updated the zoning code, the fire code, and some other codes. The recodification process, as we discussed at our workshop, this process, this simply replaces formally, even though we've already voted and approved all these, replaces all the old codes with any new ones approved throughout the year, so they go in. This is the purpose of this ordinance, and certainly I think if anyone has any questions, our city attorney is here, but would recommend that we approve the codification ordinance, just so that all of our people are up to date.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate all the many hours that have been gone into this, so I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the recodification of ordinance of the City of Bel Air, Kansas, turn 15 edition, providing for the effective date thereof, providing for the repeal of certain other ordinances not included therein, saving certain ordinances from repeal, and saving certain accrued rights and liabilities, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I still haven't gotten through a lot of these, and I have a lot of questions on some of them, so I'm not going to be able to vote on this tonight, because this is a lot of reading. And I suggest that next time, maybe we could have three or four or five chapters to do at a time, set those aside after they're done, and because all of this stuff in red, and I think I'm three-fourths of the way through, but I'm, well, I'm down to building codes and...
And these are all codes that have come before us throughout the year.
Yeah, but the red means there's changes.
That we've already approved the changes.
That doesn't say, that isn't what this says.
In previous.
If you'll refer to your city council agenda form that I included, the, any updates shown in red in Chapters 2, 5, 6, 13, and 18 have already been approved by this council. What we're doing is just bringing them into the code, so if someone shows up and wants to know it's in our current code, we're not showing them the code and then saying, here's the, here's our existing ordinance, you figure out what applies and don't. So it's incorporating that. Chapter 2 is incorporating the new language from the statutes. Chapter 6, there is a single change, and that's incorporating the 2015 Uniform Public Offense Code, which we do annually. Chapter 12, there is a single change, and that's incorporating the standard traffic ordinance. The only chapter where there is, there is change, and I don't know when this got presented to you, but that's the building codes. And you're not going to be able to read your way all the way through that unless you're a building code expert.
Right.
Councilmember McDonald and I were kind of chuckling about this. But if you'll read, if you just read the first paragraph, what you see is you're incorporating in major codes that are written by professionals, you're adopting major codes. So the Chapter 17 is basically incorporating by reference these thousand and two thousand page notebooks. So it's, it would not be common for council members to be able to sit down and read all of those. And if you, if you're wanting additional information on what's in those, you would probably need to sit down with Keith and have him walk you through that. But anyway, what the building codes are... But anyway, what the building codes are is adopting by reference updated building codes. Right at the moment, the building codes that the city of Bel Air is using is two cycles behind Sedgwick County, Wichita. So when builders come to Bel Air, they have to use different building standards than they do in Sedgwick County and Wichita, and it's confusing for them. So the goal that Keith asked me in incorporating the new building codes is to bring us exactly into conformance with Sedgwick County and Wichita. So again, chapter two changes that have, that were presented is just what state statute is requiring. Chapter six is incorporating the new 2015 UPC put out by the league. Chapter 12, the new STO put out by the league. And chapter 17 is bringing us into conformance with the rest of the building codes in the county. So other than that, you have approved everything.
Right.
Any other questions or comments?
My question, Mr. Mayor, is, is there any reason why we don't codify these as we approve them? Why do we wait and do everything at once?
I'm trying to follow state statute, which basically anticipates that we will do a codification. And it's, we could, we could codify semi-annually, but it's a heck of a lot of work. So we try to move toward one major codification a year.
Okay.
Jamie and I would like to get to the point where we're codifying in August instead of December. But we're just not there yet.
Okay, taking baby steps, it's okay.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes, thank you.
I'm very happy.
Basically, this is just a formal process.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Send a roll call. Councilmember Becker?
Aye.
Councilmember McDonald?
Aye.
Councilmember Martin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Donnell?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
And we are codified. Item J on the agenda is phase two of the Courtyards at Elk Creek. This is just exciting to see all the new homes under construction. Councilmember Martin brought in a newspaper ad with some of their marketing that they're doing over there. But the developers are ready to move into phase two and add 19 more lots. Two bids were received for the street in Storm Drains. The low bid was Kansas paving at 2,000, $204,669.10. Again, these are where the, the cost will be spread as a special assessment to the benefiting lot. So again, this will not be passed on to taxpayers here. Kansas paving was involved, and they're the ones that completed phase one. MKEC, who is here, is recommending that Kansas paving, that we, is recommending Kansas paving. So therefore, I would certainly go along with our engineer there and recommend that council accept the low bid, which was from Kansas paving.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a question before motions made?
You may.
Have we ever had any problems with Kansas paving before, Mr. Lasher?
No, we work with them, and we, if we do have issues, we work through them, with them.
And they're pretty good at following up and getting things done?
As good as a contractor does.
I'm in the long, wrong line to work again. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bid from Kansas paving at a price of $204,669.10 for the paving and drainage improvements of the courtyards at Elk Creek, phase two, and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Next is item A, kind of goes along with some of the things we talked about earlier. But that is the governing body vacancy policy. We just dealt with the resignations, we've talked about with Councilmember Lee. The, we used the governing body vacancy policy over a council at the last workshop. And during that last process, wants to require that the mayor share every single application with the council. So that was added to this policy, and is on the agenda for your consideration this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have two or three questions on this. Under confirmation of replacement, or confirmation, whatever. I guess the question would be for Allison. If the recommended replacement is not confirmed by a majority of the city council, the mayor or city council president, should the mayor fail to make another recommendation, we'll recommend another individual from those who have previously submitted the required documents. Does that mean that it's only in the absence of the mayor? Or if the mayor doesn't have another name to submit, the council president can, at that time, submit a name?
The way this policy is currently worded, it makes you wonder which is which. And if we were just going on the policy, I would say however council chose to interpret it.
Well, I interpreted, excuse me.
Yeah, however, going back to your existing charter ordinance, your existing charter ordinance limits the authority of the president of the council. So the president of the council can only act pursuant to charter in the absence of the mayor. So I think that was what was intended when this was written. But it may be another one that you'd like to table and tell some of these, these discrepancies can be clarified with the other three policies you've already tabled this evening.
Well, yes, because it says the mayor, comma, or council president. And I read it that if both of them are still there, if the mayor doesn't have another name to put up, but the president, whoever that may be at that time, has a name, that he can do it at that time.
Right, and if that wasn't in conflict with charter, I would agree with you. But because that would conflict with your charter ordinance, and charter trumps all, it wouldn't be interpreted that way. However, anybody just walking in off the street not familiar with our charter ordinances would certainly be confused by it.
So which way is it?
Charter ordinance limits the actions of the president of the council.
Does this mean that if the mayor and the president of the council?
If I'm not here, the council president is able to...
That isn't what it says.
It's, that's why it says mayor or...
Could we take that, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
One second, I'm going to try to...
Okay, sorry.
Charter ordinance is our highest form of law. No other action on the part of council can go in contravention of a charter ordinance. Underneath that is ordinance. Underneath that is resolution, and underneath that is policy. Policy is your lowest form of action. You can't take an action by policy that will be in contravention of a charter or any other higher form of action.
So then, down on one, two, three, four, where it says that the next November city election, we can't take that out. Such appointment shall be for the period from and after the date of appointment and until the date of the next November city election. This is on a vacant seat, right?
Correct, and I think whoever wrote this policy was writing it in conformance with existing charter.
Kansas law.
Our current charter says that the, that when a person is appointed, they serve in their seat until the next election. Our new charter is going to change the next election from the April election to the November election. But our existing charter does say to the next election. And I think whoever wrote this was conforming it to the existing charter. So if you, if you decide to change the charter language, by default, all the lower levels, the ordinances, resolutions, and policies have to be conformed to the new charter.
Okay, so that part would be taken out, is what you're saying?
If the charter's changed, yes.
Right. And I think that's all I had. Thank you, Mayor.
I had a question. Because when, I don't know, there was probably one before, but I remember that we did this. And the wording, I would just like to recommend that we take out or cancel president. When we had discussed this, and this has been years ago, we were saying the mayor or council president, thinking if the mayor had left, then it becomes the council president. And so I think it would be just easier, I agree with Councilmember Martin, if we just said a majority of the city council, the mayor, should the mayor fail. You know what I mean, just take out council president, because it really doesn't need to be there. Because it tells you right there on page one at the bottom that if the mayor does resign, then the council president becomes mayor. Now, that was up for discussion when we last did this too, because, you know, the council president changes every year. We also had discussion, and we might want to visit that at this time. Do we want to call for an election or appointment? Or do you want to leave that? Because that was a long discussion we had too, when we did this. Because every year, you have a new council president. And so those are things, we want that. And then I think we just take out that, November's misspelled, but we can, we can fix that. But this might be, Ms. Martin, I think this is what she was going to look at for two weeks. Your question on bullet point 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, wasn't it? Okay. Thank you.
Well, if she was going to look at it for two weeks, why isn't it on the agenda again?
Well, no, she just told you...
This is a different one.
No, well, it's the same thing in two different places.
Right.
So if she's going to look at it for item up above, we might want to table this because the charter ordinance dictates this. So you might want to just table this, because it really depends on what the charter says. And if we can't opt out of that, we can't change it here. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to table action item K.
Second.
For, may I ask for clarification? For two weeks?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one more comment. I'm wondering why this sixth bullet is on here, because it doesn't have any, it just says the candidate for city council position at blah, blah, blah. And what does it mean? What, what does it?
It's that fourth position, that Betty member, when she served two years.
Yeah, and that's the language directly out of the charter again.
That was on that vacant seat.
That's what that means.
So I, again, whoever wrote this policy was copying from the, from the language in your charter. And so as you are reviewing the charter, it certainly may impact your policies.
But that says not, to not select.
Where?
Determination by governing body to not select a replacement city council member. And then the first bullet goes on.
She's talking about this one right here.
I can't see that.
Okay, you're, go up a bullet point, number six, right there. That's what Dr. Becker was saying.
And isn't that two different things?
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I don't know.
Because that's irrelevant to the council selecting somebody to fill a position. So that bullet, in my opinion, doesn't belong in this policy.
I think you're right.
Makes sense.
That's right.
Okay, so let's take it out, wouldn't we?
And take out number six?
Yes, that sixth bullet there.
Because that's going to be in your charter ordinance.
Yeah, they just left the elections alone.
Well, it seems we're paying attention here.
Hey, okay. Just said that. Anyway, hey, final item here. Broadstone Villas Resolution of Support. We approved, actually, we actually approved this at our December 15th meeting. Zimmerman Properties have been working on their application and then found out that federal criteria, drumroll please, had changed. So, yeah, reducing the amount of market rate apartments. As a result, the Resolution of Support on the agenda tonight reflects a reduction in market rate housing from 12 to 6, and increase in affordable housing from 48 to 52. So very minor, but again, this is just against the raw in compliance. We had approved this at December 15th meeting, but when they found out that changed, they did the right thing, brought it back to us. So I would recommend that we approve this again, this Resolution of Support, so Zimmerman can move forward with the application and hopefully start construction pretty soon. I think we all remember that exciting presentation when he was here at our last meeting.
Wow.
Yeah.
Cool.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Martin?
I make a motion to approve a Resolution of Support for Tax Credit Application to be filed with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation for the development of Broadstone Villas 2 and Affordable Housing Community by Zimmerman Properties LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
First and second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All righty, discussion on future issues. Again, just want to remind everybody that the State of the City/Strategic Planning Session is one week from today at 6:30. Did want to ask the council, I have a soft yes on the photographer, but, you know, we wanted to take pictures in December, but we wanted to get dressed up for the holiday thing. So is that something that we want to go ahead and take? I know we need to get, Councilmember Winn needs to have a photo taken for the website and for the wall, and probably have another group picture. Is everybody comfortable taking that picture, say, at 6 o'clock?
If it must be done.
And if we don't like the picture, can we provide one of our own?
We could probably leave the one up, I mean, our, our individual, if we didn't like it. You know, with your walk-in, do you like those?
I'd like to change that one.
Oh, okay.
Well, then, 6 o'clock on Tuesday.
But I just seen, I have one at home that I prefer hang in there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
It doesn't have any dirty looks on it.
Do we really need a group picture?
Well, let's have it. That's a great question. That's a great question.
We already have one. We have to have Councilwoman Winn's picture taken, but do we, as a group, have to have ours taken?
She's not on our group outside the wall.
See it again?
Sorry.
Oh, I see.
The group one, we have to redo.
That's a good point, okay.
But I submitted a lot of time ago. If you want to change the one downstairs, provide your own pictures.
But that's what I'm going to ask, is if we don't need a group photo, we just have Diane get one? We just take that one down, or do you guys want a group photo?
I think it would be nice to have a group photo, if you don't mind, because it's kind of cool that we've got four women on the city council.
I don't think we all need to take our own picture again, unless you just really don't like yours down there. And I have a church picture that I'd rather put up there. But I want my picture back when I leave. Not that one down there, though.
So at a minimum?
The mice can have it.
If I get the photographer to commit and confirm?
It'd be nice to have our group. And if we wanted to have something to put in a news release or something, you'd have the current council. I think I would like to have her in it.
I like the group idea, but individual.
Good question. I'm glad we have that discussion. And certainly, Councilmember Winn, at a minimum, be prepared for your mug shot, I mean, your solo shot.
I want another one. I just had surgery, and I look in pain.
Okay, I will, we'll work on that. I'll call him again. I have no need for an executive session. Anybody? Anybody else? With that in mind, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.